Please rise, place your hand over your heart and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No amendments.
No amendments to the agenda, any other comments? Let's move on. Public comments, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on items that are not on the agenda? I have no cards and I see no one, so we'll move to the next item, consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar, please vote. That motion passes 5 to 0. We have a camera public library activity report, who's doing that?
That was on the consent, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right. Let's move down below, departmental items, do we have any?
No, we don't.
You know, this would be a good time, though, if there's anything we need to know on reports in the library, anything that's different?
As I believe you know, Mrs. Rolf is on leave, other than that, it's business as usual and the staff is taking care of things as they should.
Okay. Any comments from board members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn.
Call this meeting of the Camero City Council to order and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present, are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
I have one request, when we get to the consent calendar, I'd like to request that you vote on item K separately because I do need to abstain from that one.
But not pull it and put it other...
Right, I just need to...
Okay, we are now at the consent calendar, and, yes?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I was gonna follow Mrs. McDonald's except with respect to item... Except with respect to item F, I'd like to recuse myself as to item F.
Is there, well, we can do it the same way that she did and just vote on the two of them separately.
However Madam Mayor would prefer to...
That way the record reflects it very clearly.
There needs to be a statement of the reason.
When we get there, I will.
Okay, I was just reminding.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items F and K?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Okay, item F, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, Mr. Tremblay, do you have a statement?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote on item F, it relates to the, it relates, in essence, to the recycled water agreement between the city and Cameroza Water District, I recuse myself from that vote last June on the grounds that while United Water Conservation District, a former client of mine, is a client of my prior law firm, it's not a party to the agreement, but that, the recycled water agreement could potentially impact United's facilities and I abstained back in June on that agreement and I'll abstain on this item for that same reason now. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
Please vote on this item, item F. Motion carries four to one with Mr. Tremblay recusing himself, is there a motion to approve item K from the consent?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item K, Mrs. McDonald, do you have a statement?
I, sir, too, I'd like to, I guess recuse myself is the right word, from this item, the party Aldersgate Investment LLC is a client of the firm which I am employed and while I have no personal financial gain, just to make sure there's no impression of such, I'd like to recuse myself.
Please vote.
Oh, I just voted, sorry.
Do we re-vote?
Re-do that one.
I did the wrong one. That's the right one. Motion carries four to one with Mrs. McDonald recusing herself. Gets us down to closed session items followed by new business, so could we have a statement for the reasons of going into closed session, please?
Yes, we have three closed session items, the first one is a property item involving the Hotel Conference Center, the agency negotiators are listed in the agenda, the negotiating parties are the mean companies, under negotiation or price in terms of payment, the second property item is proposed desalter project and that is also priced in terms of payment. We have a closed session under Government Code Section 549, 56.96 involving a joint powers agency and that is under the significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, the name of the local agency representative who is on this joint powers authority which is known as, now known as, the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy DBA Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, they gotta shorten these names, is council member Tony Tremblay, and finally, there'll be a conference with legal counsel under anticipated litigation, that being initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, number of cases is one.
Okay, that gets us down to new business oral communications informational items which do not require action, Mrs. McDonald.
A couple of meetings to report on, first of all, VCTC was last Friday on the second and probably the most important thing that has to do with the city of Camero, something we all hear a lot about, VCTC voted to begin the process of, excuse me, a four-year study on the 101 freeway, so it's looking for solutions, so at least we're out there, we've committed to this study, excuse me, it will take a long four years or at least, as you can imagine, it's a very big task figuring out what's the right answer, is it HOV lanes, is it adding to the width, et cetera, et cetera, and then, of course, if you get into adding to the width and you've got all the rights aways and et cetera, et cetera, so, it's a long study, I did wanna make a comment on something we've been talking about a lot lately and that's the effect of term limits, it was interesting to watch Linda Parks, who is our current chair of VCTC, won't be here when that city comes back, and she was making her points very clear, in fact, wanting us to commit to not doing certain things, so it was interesting, if you talk...
After she leaves.
After she, yeah, after she leaves, so, wanting to upfront say, well, we won't do this, we won't do that, so it was kind of an interesting watch, so if you think it doesn't have an effect, it does, and we'll see what else happens. The next one was VCOG, had a great presentation, I know we have more time tonight, so that's why I'm taking it a little longer, sorry, but we had a wonderful presentation on a program called Safe Passage that's been mostly spearheaded from the Ventura County Sheriff's Department there in Thousand Oaks and it is a great program to keep kids out of gangs and the idea being that they start with the four-year-olds, the five-year-olds and teach them that there's other ways to live a good life and they do all sorts of wonderful activities, every day after school they help them with their homework and it's in partnership with their Parks and Rec Department, but just a great example how just some people who took that extra initiative to just want to make something better and looking for a solution to break that cycle and it's mostly done, they have a couple of areas unlike what we have in our city, we don't have them all condensed in one area, but there was a couple of apartment units that had a great deal of that activity, so they really focused on those kids and it was just amazing to really watch the support, not only from the parents and the kids, it was just a wonderful presentation. And the second one was from a group that was called, and this is one I wanna kinda warn you about a little bit, or you can take it as you want it, the group is called the Housing Solutions Working Group and it's a good group in the fact that it's bringing lots of people together looking for solutions to housing, as usual, it doesn't include elected officials, but it does have all of the normal housing advocates, then they did bring in some big employers like Amgen and some of those who say they've been affected by it, the lack of affordable housing, the thing that we have to be careful of, one of their goals is to put together a group of people who go around to all the city councils and basically fill the chamber with people supporting projects to kind of have a wilder voice than the neighbors who might be there protesting it, so it's, I guess, a question that we have to make sure we know who's in our audience anymore because you have to figure out if it's really the people that live here or just advocates coming in from throughout the county, so...
Think they're gonna bring that Prince Charming?
That one was paid, but you know, they might, but it was an interesting presentation and a lot of great facts, but I think just the one thing that we just need to be aware of that, you know, they're working on trying to find solutions, but they're also working on trying to counteract some of the people who don't want some of the projects, an interesting thing that I hadn't heard and maybe that some of you had, but, you know, Amgen took a good chunk of their employees to Florida and the reason being that supposed, you know, that had, the cost of living there was less and the housing was more affordable, but the thing I never knew was is they also cut the salaries of those employees, so it was a benefit not only to, maybe the people could buy homes, but it also saved them money.
And remember, there's no state income tax in Florida.
It wasn't all, I mean, housing might've had something to do, but it wasn't the only factor involved in it, so when we use that as the example of why, you know, they would leave, there was a lot more to this story, let's see what else I had.
Jan, can you say, it's kinda funny you say all that because those people were living here, okay, and now they had to move or stay find of the jobs, so it's not like it was a housing issue totally because now they got housing available for others, so it was them making an economic decision.
Yeah, there was a lot more to the story, which is true of any topic, you can always find all sides to it, I hope that, going on, I'm sorry, I'll talk fast, I just have a couple more, we all got, I think, an email from our SOCOM group that we help support, did you all see this or did I just, was on a different list, but did you, I wanna read it real quick and it's just a paragraph or so, but it really talks to, particularly tonight as we're talking about our community service grants, and this is from our SOCOM group and it says, thanks to a partnership between the city of Camero, Meadowlark Service League, Pleasant Valley School District, Save Our Kids Music, New West Symphony and the Carnegie Hall, over 700 Pleasant Valley School District, three third-grade students attended the orchestra sings at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza on February the 28th. They've been preparing their students since September to sing, to play recorder and dance with the New West Symphony, so then they got to go to this presentation and, to quote the kids, "The experience was incredible, awesome and amazing," so it feels good to know that we were a part of sending all of those kids to experience something that they never would have been able to experience otherwise.
It was money we not only gave to them, but also to the New West Symphony.
Correct, yeah, both sides, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right, so I appreciate them and sending that to us because it keeps us up to date, and my last thing, and I'm sorry, I don't really don't go on so much, but that's what happens when you have a light agenda, we end up taking the time anyway, there was a nice editorial in the Acorn on the 9th last week and it says, "Now's the time to get involved at City Hall" and it has to do with all of the boards and organizations that we appoint people to, and it says, you know, if you wanna get involved, now's the time, so they need to contact, I believe in most cases it would be our city clerk's office, and see what you can do, we've got the Community Development Block Grant Loan Committee, the Camero Ranch Foundation, Camero Council on Aging, the Investment Committee, the Ventura County Area Aging Advisory, we said aging twice, Advisory Board, and a couple of others, and so it's really the opportunity, if you wanna get involved in a community, here's a good starting point, come out, get involved, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeffrey, but the applications are due by April the 13th, is that correct?
Sooner.
Okay, does that sound right? And in most, in all of the applicants need to live in Camero, but you can contact the city clerk's office, it's an opportunity to get involved and I appreciate the Acorn took the time to help push that.
Mr. Morgan.
By the way, I had one call today, I sent her your way, Ms. Lucido, she'll be talking to you. Okay, first, I had a California Youth Authority tour with Kevin and it would happen to be rainy and we're out walking in the rain, but we had our umbrellas and that place has changed, I've been there every year and I was there when there were hundreds of people there, now there's only like 190 total, but they've got a lot more programs for them too, and one of them especially impressed me is the computer program, they're teaching them to do rebuilding applications and other things within the computers, one gentleman who just left got a hundred thousand dollar job from what he learned there when he got out and I can't remember, went to Northern California, I think it was, but they're learning some skills, you know, which I think is fantastic and the community, if anybody wants to come out and volunteer time to do counseling or do anything, might be accounting, because they can use people in the classes to do those kinds of things, they welcome us as counselors, I mean, people, volunteers, and if you wanna do that or know somebody, let me know and I'll give you the name of the lady head of the volunteer program. Okay, the Association of Water Agencies, that was a typical short meeting, not typical, but a short meeting because we had not a whole lot on the agenda except what we're doing in the future with the Water Wise Meetings and all the other stuff. Airport Authority, we changed officers, I was chairman last year and so now it's a county's turn, so Ms. Long is now our chairman. Routine business, a lot of people were here, the only thing we had on the calendar was very light, but we had a room full of people to discuss the rentals, I mean, the raise in their fees and it's not in our hands yet, it's a study commission, a study committee of both pilots and staff, and so all we could do is listen because it's not on the agenda and then say, you know, we're waiting for the same thing, so we're gonna wait and see what they say before we make comments on this kind of thing, but it was kind of a push to make, you know, to influence us ahead of time. Vietnam, I'm gonna let Charlotte talk about this a little bit, Vietnam Veteran Ad Hoc Committee, she is the chairman and I'll let Charlotte address that, but we had a good meeting, it's almost over, all these series of things we've done for the vets and I think they appreciate it, and she'll also talk about our plaque out in front, that's gonna be put in place. Air Pollution Control Board Meeting, typical, you know, not anything really special, it was a short meeting, it was over. I gotta say one thing more, the Arts Center opened up for a display of photographs, this lady is really good and she took them all over the world, but where she had these specifically were in Ireland, if you really wanna see what Ireland looks like from all, where she went and took pictures, it's beautiful and it's green like this, green, all over the place, and, so she, if you ever wanna find out something about that, go talk to them there and you can look at that and see where, it's a good place to visit, that's it.
Is that sci-art or the Camero Arts Center?
No, I said Camero Arts Center, I said Camero Arts Center.
You just said the Arts Center, I'm sorry.
Uh huh, that is the Arts Center.
I know, I just...
That's different.
Was clarifying.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
Mr. Tremblay?
Ranch Board, I'm sorry, Camero Ranch Board Foundation, Charlotte and I had a meeting there, we were kinda shorthanded, almost ended up with not a quorum, but they finally filled in, we had a quorum, we've had a lot of good comments, we've got a, what do you call that, a session?
Study set, no.
No, retreat, that we'll be having in the future and I think that'll be interesting, Dave Schlongen led a very good meeting, our president wasn't there for what it was and he did a good job, so that's it.
Mr. Tremblay?
Three things to talk about, first one is on meetings attended, on March 1, I attended a Board of Directors Meeting at the County of Los Angeles Hall of Administration on the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Authority DBA Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, so I'm gonna learn how to pronounce that as an acronym, but that is the energy, the new JPA on energy matters that the city has joined, it was an illuminating meeting.
Oh, what a pun.
Okay, I thought I was gonna try and run it past a few folks and see whether or not I got a reaction, but anyway, it was a long, long meeting, but quite good, there was also a special meeting of that same Board of Directors on March 6 and I participated from a remote location in Thousand Oaks via teleconference. On March 8, I had a meeting of the Executive Committee for the EDC VC, a ribbon cutting for the Salvation Army Dental Clinic in Oxnard and John Fraser is on the board of that very, very worthwhile project, they added a second dental chair for that office and it's in Oxnard, but it also serves Camero residents, so if there are any Camero residents who happen to be watching this, who are in need of dental services and cannot afford it, I would encourage them to contact the Salvation Army and I'll get a number and put that out, so that was a ribbon cutting there. Also with Charlotte, I attended a business visit on Via Landra for BKM Office Furniture, Whip Communications and Sage Network and that was a, BKM Office Furniture has done wonders with that space, that is truly a great office setup to look at, how they do those, it's very, very creative, and then I, on the same day, attended a ribbon cutting at Cape Passa, again with the mayor on that, so that was a busy day, and then on March 14th this morning, Mrs. McDonald and I attended a Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Facility Needs Ad Hoc Meeting and Art Liaison Committee Meeting and my understanding, Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's tomorrow night that will be the final presentation at Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District of the needs assessment study and then we will be having, this council together with the Board of Directors of PVRPD, will be having a meeting in about two weeks, a joint meeting to discuss that same, that same needs assessment. Okay, those are meetings, second, just to note that it's International Women's History Month and I just wanted to commend it to people's attention and perhaps they might consider doing some reading and observation of Women's History Month, great thing to observe. Third, and a little bit more lengthy, I had a resident of Dara Street contact me at Farmer's Market and we had a lengthy discussion and this is on the traffic side, so it's especially for Mr. Klotzel's ears, this resident lives on Dara Street and they have experienced, I would say, in the last year or two, I don't wanna hype it, but I will call it a material increase in traffic, particularly around school drop-off time, about 7:45 a.m. and then around 3:30, 3:30 p.m., and what happens is there's a school in that vicinity, I think it's Los Primeros, and there may be other people who are trying to go to work, not connected with Los Primeros, but trying to go to work or come home from work, who are trying to get to Lewis Road and they will get off on Shepherd and go right or south on Dara and then left on Elma, sorry I'm giving all these directions, to Lewis Road, and in that area, there are two alternate routes, of course, one is Ponderosa to Temple to Lewis and the second is Ponderosa to Adolfo to Lewis, but a lot of folks are choosing to go through that neighborhood and it just seems like it's been an increase late in the last year or two, so one of the things that it's done is there's been a real potential for speeding in that neighborhood and, together with more cars, so I wanted to just bring it to the attention, Mr. Klotzel, of the traffic engineer for perhaps consideration of some monitoring and maybe even signage, I don't know, like, here's a better, here's a faster way to get to Lewis through the residential neighborhood.
If it were faster, they'd be going the faster way.
You're right, it's like, you know, and I get that part, but also I would ask that there be some consideration just from a law enforcement monitoring purpose, just because of the speeding that apparently is going on all the way down Dara Street, which is, this person told me, and I don't know if it's right, it's the longest street, residential street in Camero, and I don't know if that's right or not.
Which one?
Dara?
Dara, no.
No, not at all.
Okay, well, it's certainly a lengthy street, if it's not the longest street, and so there's...
Not close.
Okay, all right, anyway, it seems like a lengthy street, so because of the traffic congestion and the, what appears to be somewhat of an increase, I would just like city staff to look into it.
Sure, we'll look into that.
Thank you, that's it.
Mr. Kilde?
Okay, Airport Authority, I did attend out at, well, I guess it was a walk-through at Youth Authority with Mr. Morgan out there and it's kind of interesting, the big, one of the things that's happened in the computer world, and I'm by far not an expert on this, but it's what they call coding, coding is a big thing now, and they actually started this program, which I felt was very interesting, Mr. Morgan did too, they started this program in San Quentin, of all things, and they got some of the individuals there to go into this coding program and I think there was about 12 or 15 of them, it's close to the Silicon Valley up there, and one of them got so good that, Mr. Morgan's right, Facebook, Mark Zuckerberg hired him and started him out at six figures, so they were so impressed with that, that they're gonna start a program like that out here and they've got about 12 or 15 already signed up for that and Mr. Morgan and I were in there as they were rehabbing a building out there and putting in the, you know, the electrical, it takes quite a lot of upgrades in a building out there and they've got a lot of resources out there for the clientele that they've got and they're just hoping that when they do get, you know, back into their communities that they'll have some skills to try to, you know, have their lives pass, if you will, you know, change here, so, Mr. Morgan and I met a number of them, we went up and talked to them and, you know, I know I mentioned it once, you really got a lot of help here now, you know, I hope you take advantage of it, that's really what the important thing of it here and we'll see what happens, but the good news is that they're really trying to get them trained into a job, you know, that they could do for the rest of their lives, which is, you know, part of it is just showing them what's available, of course, and giving some necessary skills, so that was interesting. I wanna talk just a little bit tonight about the school, the Rancho Campana, and I did have some conversation and does anybody know, or maybe you can maybe let me know, how that performing arts is doing up there, I know we were very instrumental in getting that approved and that was a very, you know, that was at least a component of it and I don't hear much about how the facility is being utilized up there, so if anybody does, maybe somebody can bring some information to me, it doesn't have to be up here, it can certainly get it any other way.
Maybe staff can get you something.
Kevin, can I follow up a little bit on that too? When we first okayed it, it was supposed to allow Cameron High School students also to join in on those kind of things, like their athletes could join into Camero athletic programs, I'd like to see how that's worked out too, to make sure that Cameron High School students have a chance to be in there if they're doing things.
Okay, we'll have staff get that report.
Yeah, that'd be fine, and that's all I had tonight.
Okay, I've got a few things too, I attended an RDP meeting and the big takeaway from that is, get out your calendars, everybody, the third week of April, there will be 24 aircraft testing and training program, during the whole week, there'll be F-18 Super Hornets, so expect additional landings, takeoffs and phone calls, but that's...
They're coming in over us then, they're not coming in over the ocean.
No, they don't come in over the ocean, they take off over the ocean, so that'll be, unless the wind, they go with the prevailing wind, so unless the winds, they're strong, really strong winds, they'll be coming in that way, third week of April. I attended the Ranch Foundation meeting that Mr. Morgan reported on, I attended the Vietnam Veterans Committee, I'm gonna be brief on this, but... Uh, I'm going to be brief on this, but the, uh, tentative date for our final program will be November, is set for November 10. That could change, but plan to attend that. It's a Saturday. Uh, and the council did approve, uh, a way of doing the plaque. The committee has discussed other options, and that will be coming back to the council. So I'm not going to bring that to you now, because that'll be coming back as an, uh, an agenda item.
Charlotte, they don't understand that, what that plaque you're talking about?
Well, they do. That was the plaque to have the, the names on, and it's going to change, Mr. Morgan. So let's just have the discussion when it's an agenda item, not tonight. Uh, I attended a Sailor of the Year presentation, and I was delighted to discover that he's in Camrio. He's a Navy reservist, had been here and living in Navy housing in Camrio, uh, and then got out of the Navy after 10 years and decided he's working in Simi Valley, but they bought their home in Camrio, so I, I was happy to hear that. Uh, I attended two ribbon cuttings and a special Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meeting last Friday afternoon. And that's my report. And so with that, we have time, I believe we could still go into closed session for the reasons that our city attorney announced, and after that, we will be going into a study session at about 6 o'clock. And so we will recess to those two things, and then we'll be back here at 7:30.
The Camrio City Council, back to order, asks that the record reflect that all council members are present, and I'll ask Mrs. McDonald to please lead us in the flag salute.
Please rise. Your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll go on to public comments. I have four cards. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda, which is pretty much everything, because there's nothing on tonight's agenda, please fill out a blue card in the back and hand it to the city clerk, and I'll read these names in the order that I got them. Let me give you our, our rules. Uh, each person has three minutes. There's a, a clock here that you can see and a clock out there that I can see. There's a, uh, when you first start talking, it'll start counting down. Uh, there'll be a green light on. When you get to one minute remaining, it turns to a yellow light, and a buzzer will sound. But you don't have to stop then, you can keep going until the red light comes on and the second buzzer sounds, and it says zero. And then after that, the bottom just opens up and you fall right down in. And so we'll go on to the next person, then. Uh, first one is Lawrence Missman. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Lawrence Missman. I am the owner of the Motorcycle Training School Learn to Ride VC in the, at the Camrio Airport. We're certified by the Highway Patrol as a motorcycle safety course for students of all ages to attain their motorcycle license, excuse me, and learn the safest practices for future riding during their career. We not only teach beginner students, but we also offer higher education for experienced riders to continue the safety and awareness of riding, excuse me, a motorcycle. We've been at the Camrio Airport for four and a half years now, and prior to that, the school was at the Camrio High School for 14 years. We take pride in teaching safety and bringing awareness to the community of Camrio and surrounding areas, and we hope to continue doing so in the city of Camrio. I am here today because, as, as you know, the airport is building hangars to allow for more airplanes. So we're looking for a new location for our riding school to continue with here. There are certain parameters that we need to follow for our school. Basically, a large paved area of 60,000 square feet, which is 150 feet wide by 200 feet long, times two. The reason we do this is because we've been here for so long that we want to continue and stay in Camrio. There are several large parking lots throughout the city that we know of and seen, but trying to reach out to different owners to be able to maybe sublease from them has been a difficult task. So we're hoping that the fellow members of our community can assist us in finding a new location to continue providing motorcycle safety and awareness in this coun, in this county. If you are aware of any such locations or would like to take our information for future reference, please feel free to come see us afterwards. I do thank you for allowing us to speak, yes.
I want to talk to you when you leave.
Yes, sir.
Because there might be something. But it's not exactly in the city of Camrio, it's close by.
That's fine. I've actually spoke a couple times to the sanitation department. They have an old landfill that they filled in, that we tried to talk to them about. So I thought the city council might be able to help with that, because they're not allowed to build a building on it. So just to put a parking lot on it to run motorcycles, it's something that doesn't cost anything, things like that.
And maybe our staff can help you, too.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much for your time.
Okay, Barbara Williams?
When I was previously here, I, um, requested about repaving Camrio Springs Road. Nothing has been done, and so I'm, I'm a little bit worried because the road continues to deteriorate. And when, over half of the community are seniors and stuff, we need to keep our streets in order. You almost feel like, you know, we're the stepchildren of Camrio, and we sometimes get forgotten. We pay the same taxes as everybody else does, and, but you don't have to maintain our streets or do our street sweeping. So we're actually a good bargain, and I'm hoping that you will, um, repave Camrio Springs Road to keep it safe for our community. The next thing I want to bring up had to do with the referral for the Camrio Springs Golf Course from New Urban West and Chamillion Springs. One of the, or the conditions of approval had to do with doing certain testing first and providing the results. Um, I, I, as a member of that community, have not heard anything of the results and do not know what's going on, but I am concerned, because we have had multiple sightings of mountain lions in our area. And according to the National Park Service, it may be more than one mountain lion. There is one tagged one that has been seen in our community, but they think there's also an untagged one that has been roaming the community. And the Camrio Springs Golf Course is one of the habitats for the people like, for the animals like the mountain lions. And, you know, if it were to be developed, it would force them more into our community and endanger our people. Yes, we moved into their habitat, and so we've got to protect the existing habitat for them, because they've been encroached on so much. And my, my final issue that I would like to bring up has to do with, um, it's probably a sore subject, and it has to do with the term limits and some of the comments that have been put out recently. And I was, I was tremendously offended to hear that this council, because of their experience, are the only ones who can serve us. And that's the way it came out in the, in the comments, the way it was interpreted by some of us in the public. And I want to let you know, there are wonderful people in this community who could serve on this city council, but every single one of you, your first term, you were inexperienced as a council member. And so you have to remember that anybody in this community could do the same thing that you're doing today, given an opportunity. Thank you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, Barbara, I've seen lions out there, golfed early one morning years ago and saw one chasing a rabbit, so I seen it on the golf course.
Matt? We've seen it multiple places, but there, we're actually being warned now when they're, when they're out there and stuff, so that people can make sure that they're going. They're seen typically in the early morning, um, the 5:30-ish range. We've seen on the fire road above Alada. It's been down in the nature park and at the golf course.
Matt Lorimer?
I have a few comments tonight. Uh, Mr. Trembley put term limits on a ballot. Um, the public had really no saying when that legislation was crafted, but what's even more disturbing is Ventura County Star has been endorsing you for 118 years. They gave Mr. Trembley, uh, basically, an avenue to reach the people through an article with nothing else regarding the other, uh, term limit proposition. You know, the Star has endorsed you guys years after years. Again, this is coming from a paper that's laid off 300 people. They're about, they're about to close their building in July, okay? They're not going to give people good advice when they can and keep their house in order. And by the way, speaking of term limits, you guys say that you guys have the experience. Ms. Bray's been coming here for almost a year. It's because he, she applied for a grant program. That grant program used Habitat for Humanity. They didn't have license, didn't have permits. And again, you endorse them by giving them another contract. You still haven't resolved that issue. And that's really shameful, because it seems you can't solve that problem with all your experience. Another thing I want to talk about, Mr. Mike Morgan. Mr. Morgan seems to like to attack me. He comes to the audience prior to that, calls me a hick from Texas. He calls me out as a person that shouldn't come here and speak because I may live in another state. Let me remind you, all you councilmen pledge allegiance to the flag. People died in this country, okay? There was a time when you're an African American, you were property. There was a time when you're a woman, you couldn't vote. And now you've got a sitting councilman there who likes to think that because you live in a different area, you don't live in this, uh, community, you shouldn't have a right to speak. He's wrong, dead wrong. Then he leans over to Jan McDonald, calls me a liar. You know something? I'm not the one that covered up an embellishment, Mr. Morgan. Your record in this community is shameful. I've heard it all from a lot of citizens, okay? As you as councilmen, when you turn your back to a person who treats the public like that, what does it say about you and your experience over all of the years? I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate, anybody comes to this forum, whether they come from another country, whether a different religion, no matter where they come from, you should have respect for them. When Mr. Morgan calls me out like that, you don't have an idea why I moved. I have a son who's got a medical disability, okay? Almost died. We had to make changes in our life. It's not like I wanted to leave this community. I love this community, I've stood up for this community for a long time. And you're right, I disagree with your policies, but I've never gotten personal with you like Mr. Morgan has in the past. I don't appreciate it. Each and every one of you took an oath. You pledge allegiance to that flag every night, and you know something? Why don't you speak up and say that's inappropriate? You eyes are all councilmen, I expect better from you. Mr. Morgan will never change. This is his MA. But you know, I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
Terry Bray?
Good evening, Terry Bray, uh, three-decade-plus resident of Camrio. And like Mr. Lorimer brought up, the issue in regards to the damages to my home by Habitat for Humanity have not been resolved. The, uh, most recent article in regards to Habitat for Humanity of the Ventura County Star rates them supposedly as really fantastic. I looked into how this was done, it's based on their tax filings. It also states in this article that Stephen Dwyer, the executive director, who the Contractors State Licensing Board issued the citation of not having a contractor's license for 34 years of operation, is stepping down. This article also refers to how they're trying to be transparent and accountable for their finances, but, uh, when you don't have a contractor's license, you don't purchase permits and have inspections, uh, that does save your organization quite a bit of money. So, uh, him stepping down, I have a feeling has a lot to do with the near $100,000 in court costs in regards to being a defendant in my case against them and the city of Camrio. In regards to my application for CHS, Comprehensive Housing Services, I followed through as you now require me to do in writing, according to Mr. Vaca of the Community Development Department, and I've contacted them, and I don't get any response. I have requested to have the new scope of work made and include the renovations of the damages to my bathroom made by Habitat, as you now require of me to have done, using my grant money to fix their mistake, their incompetency, and I'm not getting any responses. I've talked to Julia, I've talked to Kim at CHS, I get no text, no callback, no email, nothing. Am I being jerked around for your entertainment? I mean, what is this really about? I'm doing what it is you told me to do to get these renovations that I've qualified for twice, and I'm not getting any response. This is feeding my feelings of being retaliated against for finding out that you guys are funding an organization that didn't qualify to be funded, that I did your homework for you. Why am I being ignored? Why am I being singled out? Now, CHS has got public funds coming their way, just like Habitat. I could request who's been funded through their, through this program, through the city, and find out if anybody else has been jerked around like I'm being jerked around. All I'm asking is to have renovations taken care of that remain outstanding for the past two years. I'm burned out of reapplying the tarp on my roof to prevent the leakage that's coming in the windows, and other things that were assessed over two years ago that should have been taken care of. I got damaged. My home got damaged because I came to you. That's how it happened, and I'm holding you accountable still. I'm requesting, uh, Mr. Vaca to contact CHS on my behalf, because I'm not getting responded to. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who has an item to speak to us that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we will close public comments. There are no further items on the agenda, but we have not completed our study session, and we have another closed session to go to. So we will be back, or we will adjourn after those two meetings have finished, and we will now recess to the, uh, study session and then to the closed session.